Hello and welcome to the City of Marsh Town, City Council Chambers. We are here for a regular meeting. It's April 8, 2019, and the time is 5:30 PM. The site is 10 West State Street. Notice to the public, the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the items on the agenda. You need to step up to the microphones, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers should speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council in general and not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and councilor to respond to specific questions or comments or to have staff respond during that meeting. We have been called to order, and those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Isom.
Here.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Gowdy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Very good. Full house. The first item on the agenda, E, is for mayor, council, and administrator comments. I'd like to lead off with one. Sarah Rosenbloom, who is our library director, was unable to be here today, but she asked me to pass along this message from her. She is attending the visitation for Susan Malloy tonight, and that's why she's not here. Susan was a committed community member. She served on the city council. She served on the planning and zoning board. And during her time on the council, she was a strong advocate to pass the bond measure that built the new library that got the national award. She also served as president of the Friends of the Library and assisted greatly in the fundraising for the library building. Her family has directed that all donations and memorials go to the library. I'm also supposed to throw in that it's National Library Week, and so it's fitting to have that tie in with Susan Malloy. Let's have a moment of silence for Susan. I really enjoyed Susan when she was doing the city council and the library things. She just was a wonderful woman. Her obituary is on the Times Republican website, so I'd encourage those to look her up and see all the things that she accomplished in this town. Does anyone else up here have any comments to make before we go to the next item? It's pretty quiet. Would you let me know who's going to address the HUD lead-based paint hazard reductions? Michelle.
Thank you, Your Honor. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. And today I have graciously joining us Steve Eggleston. He is the Field Office Director with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development out of the Des Moines office. And so we have some great news that I think you all are aware of, but to kind of make it official, April 1st, we began our new lead project. And so Steve is here to make a couple of comments and present us with some really nice large checks.
Thank you. (applause). Mayor, council members, and Administrator Kinzer, thank you for letting me be here today. I feel like Michelle's been so successful with these HUD grants. Some of you I saw four years ago. I think maybe in two years, I need to have a permanent spot in the agenda so I can do this again. I know that you've all gone through some terrible, rough times with the weather, and what I've seen since is some amazing resiliency. I sat with the mayor shortly after this happened with a large meeting of people and very kindly and very softly said, "This is learning from the fire." And it was, he's done a great job. You've shown great resiliency. Your partnerships with Habitat and some militia was explaining, some of, Michelle was explaining some of the demolition that's going on. Well, today, on behalf of Regional Administrator Jason Moore, I have, I would like to present a, two celebratory checks. You've actually got two HUD grants. One is for, excuse me for doing the numbers, $2,999,788 in lead-based paint hazard reduction grant. That money's going to be used to reduce lead hazards in people's homes in this neighborhood for 125 units. Now, that's in addition to the programs that you have undergoing to recover from the weather event. And I use the word "event." I know it was worse than that, but that's, I'm dealing with an event on the east side and the west side also. But in addition, in addition to that grant, you're going to receive $450,000 in Healthy Homes supplemental funding. And what you are able to do is to work in conjunction with Vision Marshalltown and other medical and social service providers into help reduce the effect of lead with children and keep a track of that, keep track of that. So with that said, I congratulate you. I congratulate Michelle and her staff. Trust me, these grants aren't easy. And what's really important is you all have agreed to this to happen so that you can help the citizens of this city, and that's what really counts. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and hold up these checks so we can get a picture. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.[394.69][394.69](applause). No kidding.
Mayor, you want to get that?
No, thank you.[400.12][400.12](laugh) Nowhere near as photogenic.
That's true. Sir, thank you.
You stipulate to that, Leon.
Enter, thank you.
Thank you.[409.62][409.62](applause).
I will just add, we do have Joyce Brown and Esmeralda Armus here. They have been administering this program for the last, Joyce has been 2012? 2012. So we have a great team. We will be adding some inspectors to our team to get things rolling. And we are already accepting interest applications from property owners that think that they might be interested in, eligible to receive assistance. So if people have questions, they can contact us. We hope to really get up and underway and seeing some activities perhaps late summer that we will see some stuff. And this is a three-and-a-half-year grant, so this will be lasting us for a little while now. But we're really appreciative to HUD for that award and to Steve, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Michelle. Not many people know just how many kids you have helped in this town by doing that.
I think we have done, we started our first grant in 2003, and I believe we've done close to 600 units throughout our region that we've operated in since the first award in February of 2003.
The building right behind, to the south of our office, had a bad lead problem, and we just hated to see kids there. It got abated, and now it's fun to see kids there.
Yeah.
You know, that's a big difference. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary, would you, let's go on to item F, the consent agenda. I guess we first ought to solicit a motion to approve it.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you read those items on the consent agenda for the public?
Approve the March 25th in the bill list in the amount of $1,323,154.13. Received the building report for February. Appoint Cindy Brodin to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Amber Danielson to the Board of Adjustment. And reappoint to the Solid Waste Commission Marla Graenbauer, Merrill Price, and Robert Forbes. Reappoint to Parks and Recreation Advisory Matt Tullis and Jeffrey Sagi. Reappoint to the Board of Adjustment Tammy Engel, David Schultz, Calissa Thurston, and Robert Wenner. Approve February monthly financial statements. Resolution approving school resource officer agreement with Marshalltown Community School District. Resolution authorizing the rebuild of the 18th Avenue Stormwater Lift Station pump from electric pump for the price of $55,858.69. Resolution authorizing tuck pointing of the sledge pumping building for the water bushing control plant department from pageant tuck pointing for the price of $46,290. Resolution approving an electric line easement with Interstate Power and Electric Light Company. And that would be the rest of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go on to item G then.
We have a motion regarding alcohol transfer and premise update request for an April 20 event at the Central Iowa Fair. Midnight Ballroom has requested the transfer, and Central Iowa Fair will do a premise update to allow the inclusion of the transfer.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Tie goes to Cahill this time. And.
Isom or Weren, I think.
Stereo. Weren gets the second, sorry.
Okay.[659.12][659.12](laugh)
Picky, picky. Any discussion?
I recommend approval, Your Honor.
And you didn't get any written requests that did not be approved?
No, Your Honor, I did not receive any comments either for or against.
Very good. Seeing no other discussion, let's call the roll on that one.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
No.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, thank you. On to item H, resolutions. Madam Clerk, please tell us the first one.
Resolution approving a 28E cooperative agreement between the city and the Marshalltown YMCA, YWCA for the continued operations of the Aquatic Center.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
No.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, thank you. On to item H, resolutions. Madam Clerk, please tell us the first one.
Resolution approving a 28E cooperative agreement between the city and the Marshalltown YMCA, YWCA for the continued operations of the Aquatic Center.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Just to let you all know, this is what has come out of ending our operations agreement. There was a reason to go back and review three other existing agreements and take the parts that were still valid in each of those. The piece that is financial of this is that we do utilize the YMCA's parking for four months of the year for the pool, and so we've agreed to 10% of parking lot maintenance expenses to be presented by the Y. That would include if there was a major project, that they would be presenting us with 10% of that cost as well. But the planning can be done so that it would fit into our capital improvement plan.
And the Y staff and members are good to go with us?
Yes, this was negotiated with two of their board members and their director, as well as Jeff and myself.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments?
That's, the maintenance is only on the 84 stalls that we're going to use, right?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Another question. Was there any attempt to do some in-kind collaboration between the city and the Y, which would not involve financial?
Do you have something specific that you're?
Sure. Plowing, for one thing. Lawn maintenance, for another.
So the, the maintenance of the facility is the responsibility of the city. We had started taking that over in last year's operations agreement, and so that was something that we had already been doing. The snow plowing is something that the Y does call upon us to remove the big piles of snow before the state Y swim meet in early March, and so we've, we've done that for them, but that is not formalized in this agreement.
I think, I think in the future, maybe it should. I'm okay with it now, but I think there's, there's some tit-for-tat that can go on in collaboration without financial exchange.
In the law, we call that quid pro quo.
I know. I didn't want to use that term.[888.12][888.12](laugh).
I guess the only thing to your comment, Bill, is that I believe the agreement's valid for quite some time, so now would be the time to address that if we're going to address it. Because if I remember right, the expiration on it's not within a few years on the 28E agreement?
I think it's 2044 or something like that.
It's basically through, through 2040. And so ultimately, you know, that's a service that we don't have to provide. We've, we've been doing that. That's where I don't think it necessarily needs to be addressed in here because it's really not related to the operation of the Aquatic Center. And so that's really what this agreement addresses. Our decision to continue to provide that service is one that's made each year based on time and resources available of staff, based on weather. And so that's where we, we always say that we can't guarantee that we'll have those snow piles removed, but we'll try our best to do it. But that certainly was something that was brought up in conversation going back and forth as well, as we talked about getting to the 10% of the, the maintenance costs.
Other comments or questions? Public comment? Let's vote.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Thank you. That carried. Let's go on to resolution number two.
We have resolution approving the Marshalltown Municipal Airport State General Aviation Vertical Infrastructure Program Grant Assistance Application.
Is there a motion to approve first?
So moved. Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion?
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. I'll point out first and foremost, the title and the resolution are incorrect for this item by my own error. This is a grant application for a general aviation assistance for, for $150,000 and also for terminal and hangar site improvements for, using the airport improvement program for $320,000. So the actual application attachment on the website and on the agenda is correct. The resolution is incorrect. I did hand out a revised resolution before the meeting started. So we would be asking you to approve the application for $150,000 and for $320,000, both with the Iowa DOT. Are there any questions I can answer?
Your Honor, I move to amend the motion to reflect that there are two grants being applied for.
Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second, Your Honor.
Let's vote on that one, on the amendment.
On the amendment, Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Carrie, very good. Thank you. Let's go on to the next resolution, please.
Resolution adopting guidelines for small cell facilities.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Again, your Public Works Director, this is a fairly important topic coming up, and it may warrant further discussion, but as the cellular business model continues to evolve, we've moved from 3G to 4G, and this will take us to 5G. The FCC has written some guidelines that, that cities and municipalities need to have their set of guidelines in place before April 15th. That's why this is on the agenda this evening, to help regulate and to, to get a handle around the 5G implementation. Whereas with 4G and the 3G, you've seen large cell towers in one location that cover, you know, a mile, two miles, three miles. The 5G implementation is going to have many smaller antennas. I've heard as close as 300 feet apart on light poles, utility poles, buildings, whether public or private. So there's going to be this wave of this 5G implementation. I would say I'm still behind the eight ball, but catching up fast on understanding this. And so these guidelines were written by our attorneys, Lynch Dallas, in an order to make sure that we're out in front of it. The FCC has regulated that if you have guidelines in place prior to April 15th, you are able to go back and make modifications to your guidelines as you go. If you do not have those in place before April 15th, they say they would not allow or frown upon changing the, the rules as we went forward after April 15th. Are there any questions that I can attempt to answer on this topic?
We were in San Francisco a week, well, weekend before last, and 5G was all over the place, so it's definitely coming.
Horizon Wireless is pretty much the industry leader, and I know San Francisco is a, a test city, or I'm not sure what the appropriate terminology would be for, for the smart revolution. This is going to help with autonomous cars, your phone being able to control your thermostat and your lights at home, and just the, the automated world that we're moving into.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So it, reading through this, it talks about preserving the character of the city's neighborhoods and corridors. So would you call this about as restrictive as we could make it, and then we can kind of lighten up?
It's possible that it could go both ways, Councilmember Weren. This guideline was based on the American Public Works Association's general guidelines, and I forget the other, might have been the League of Cities, that we had two that we melded together. One was written really from the public's perspect, or the municipality's perspective. One was written from the carrier, cell carriers' perspective. I'm not sure if I would classify this as the most restrictive and then we would lighten up. It's really happening also fast that, from what I've heard from other municipalities, from industry leaders, is it's tough to predict where this may go. What we want to get out in front of is making sure there aren't boxes with wires hanging off of light poles or, or traffic signals, to make sure that we are, that we are in control of what they, what the facilities look like, and then mostly hoping to be in control of, are there fees associated with this as we go forward? That's something I couldn't answer at this time, but I want to reserve the right to charge fees if necessary in the future.
Yes, sir.
Could we maybe take time to run this, if we approve this tonight, which I think we are, make sure the planning and zoning gets a copy of this so they can take a look at it?
Our planning and zoning director has taken a look at it. Absolutely, I'd be happy to have it run through the board as well, but.
Well, I just want to make sure that they understand that we can make some more rules to, so that it fits the neighborhood.
I think, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development, I do believe, and Justin and I have been communicating along with Legal on this issue, because we do have regulations under the zoning ordinance that addresses like our large towers that we're used to seeing and dealing with, typically under a special use permit. At this point, we're not changing that aspect. I think if you read through a lot of this language, it is talking, as Justin mentioned, about on light poles, on things that are in the right-of-way, which really maybe aren't as impactful on our zoning ordinance side, which is on our private property side. But we did talk about the fact that we may need to make some adjustments to our zoning ordinance as well, where these things overlap and need to do some reflection. Obviously, we didn't need to get all that done in the timeline. We couldn't possibly do that, but we know that that's probably something we'll see on our cell side of things and antennas and structures on the zoning as well.
Very good. Thank you.
The one thing that I would just add that really has been taken sort of out of the hands of, of cities is the ability to regulate these going into our right-of-way. So they can go anywhere. This is just our attempt to say, these are the parameters that they really have to fit into. And so it's trying to make the best of a not-so-great situation and try to retain some small amount of control over, over the right-of-way so that you just don't have poles and antennas popping up every 200 feet or so.
Other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Thank you. That one carried as well. On to resolution number four, please.
Resolution approving contract change order number two for the Police and Fire Headquarters Project for Construction Management Services from Story Construction, an increase of $224,955.76.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So as the city clerk just read, this is a change order to our construction manager agreement with Story Construction. The original construction was, was written with the intent that we would be open and in our new building by now. We did manage to stretch that construction contract about two to two and a half months beyond the estimated completion date. Through negotiations, Story and I have written this new, this new amendment with this amount based on what we've seen historically for our cost per day, anticipating that this could take up to three to four more months before their services are no longer needed. I would mention that the original agreement was written as a not-to-exceed amount, which means that we don't just pay the bill. Story sends us a bill each, or we don't just pay the amount. Story sends us a bill each month with their hours and their resources allocated on there. That would, we would follow the same procedure with this amendment to their construction Certainly, some of this is attributable to our situation with our Mason currently. It's possible that some of this could be recouped from our Mason as we go forward. Obviously, couldn't, couldn't stand it, or couldn't plan to tell you what litigation or, or negotiation may bring for us, but I would recommend that we do approve this amendment to Story's Construction Management Services contract, and would be happy to answer any questions, or we do have two representatives from Story with us tonight.
Are there any questions of Justin or Story? Comments up here? Comments out there? Let's vote.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Thank you. That one also carried. On to resolution, or item number five.
Item number five, we have three change orders for the public safety building, the first being Allied Construction Services, an increase of $2,215. The second being general supplies for garland construction, an increase of $1,589.36, and an increase of $20,499.20 for electrical communications for D'Vries Electric.
Is there a motion to approve item five with those three different resolutions?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I would like a description of number three.
Number three, bear with me while I open it. I can't, couldn't tell you off the top of my head, Councilman Lamer, but it is for electrical communications and security as, as recommended by our stat, or our contract IT person, BDH Consulting. Bear with me, it's pulling up as we speak. So it's really to install more cabling, it looks like, to make sure that we have the communication between the different departments, fire, police, and, and dispatch. Cable trays to hold the cables. Adding additional circuits to a server room. Adding additional circuits to the dispatch server room. Dispatch floor boxes for telecommunications. I mean, I think the simple answer might be some details that we might have missed, overlooked in our short review time before we sent this out to bid, and amongst the different departments. Knowing how to read through a set of architectural drawings and find all the details that they need, I would say that that's probably the simplest answer on this, is missed things.
Thank you.
Want to add anything?
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
communication between the different departments, fire, police, and dispatch. Cable trays to hold the cables, adding additional circuits to a server room, adding additional circuits to the dispatch server room, dispatch floor boxes for telecommunications. I mean, I think the simple answer might be some details that we might have missed, overlooked in our short review time before we sent this out to bid, and amongst the different departments. Knowing how to read through a set of architectural drawings and find all the details that they need, I would say that that's probably the simplest answer on this, is missed things.
Thank you.
Want to add anything? Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. That carried as well. Now on to Item I with ordinances, Number One, please.
A motion to reconsider the third reading of Ordinance 14980 regarding changes to the Marshall Town zoning ordinance of 2010 regarding Chapter 29 Table of permitted and special uses for commercial and industrial districts.
Is there such a motion to be made?
I would move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I can't remember, this is one that requires discussion or not?
Yes, not to re...
Not to reconsider?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on it, then.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Sorry, I just want to make sure, this is just for the interior storage, correct?
No, this is to bring the ordinance back up.
Oh, bring it back, thank you. Got it. Motion reconsider, yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, it is back on the table, and now we're at a point where we could consider the ordinance itself, and is this the second or third reading? I've lost track.
Third reading.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the third reading?
I move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, any discussion up here first? And seeing none, hearing none, any public discussion?
Hi, Randy Dixon, U-Haul Company, 6310 Douglas, Des Moines. Thank you again for having me back to make another try. So, I have just a couple of things that I wanted to, for lack of a better term, clear And I'm just going to read some terminology that's been used as of late, and hope to kind of rebut that a little bit. There's been some discussion about possibly using greenery to partially obstruct the unsightliness of the proposed outbuildings, not to mention that there is no ordinance in effect that would require this, it would be completely voluntary. U-Haul may voluntarily install the greenery, but will the next owner. I just wanted to make it clear that once we decide to partner with a community, it's for good. We don't flip properties, that's not what the business we're in. Another comment was, U-Haul has taken occupancy of the old Kmart building in Ames, as well as in Des Moines. We do not, and will not be doing anything with the Kmart in Ames. We have a facility there, we purchased in 2014, and currently, we're constructing a three-story, climate-controlled facility on a budding property that we purchased. In Des Moines, on the south side, we did take ownership of a Kmart. Says neither of these locations will house exterior storage units, that's incorrect. The one on the south side will have exterior, three buildings have been approved. Approving the zoning change would diminish the trajectory and quality standards we are beginning to see come to fruition. The potential adverse conditions would not speak well to our appreciation and respect to our existing businesses. I would say, an empty decaying property would definitely not speak well to the appreciation of existing businesses. Another thing said was, now is not the time to lower our standards and diminish the aesthetics of the route. Leaving the property as is will certainly do that. There are many unsightly things. U-Haul is not one of those. I find some of the comments hurtful and inaccurate. U-Haul has helped families move to a better life for 75 years. Everything we do, everything I do is first-class, our customers expect that, and so we must I believe this is the right thing to do, and hopefully so will you. I have a couple of quick examples, I'm not sure how to put them up here. I don't know if I can get some help.
If you set them on there, back in the booth, they should be able to switch over to that view.
Greg?
It's not something that we can do here.
Nope. It's changing your input.
not what we're planning. This is an example of a U-Haul facility in Urbana, Illinois, that one of my colleagues In my opinion, this is absolutely not unsightly. Keep in mind that we're proposing two buildings, not six, so if you can kind of visualize, in the expanse of this facility, which the Kmart here is very similar in size, and so, in scale, these buildings really wouldn't look like much on this big property against the backdrop of this big building. So, I leave you with that, and thank you, everyone.
While you're there, I'm not sure it's ever been said, the size of these buildings?
They are 2,400 square feet.
How many bays does that have in it?
They're about 100, I'm sorry, they're about 100 feet long, or thereabouts, and that's, that can be changed, if the scale is too much, and they're 20 feet wide. So, I think we're proposing 120, 20 feet wide, so that'd be 2,400 square feet, I believe. Yeah. And again, just two.
And your thoughts on those, where on the property, do you visualize those?
They would be on the south side of the parking lot, on the south side of the main entrance. So, if you know where the credit union is, they would be on that side of the parking lot. They would be closer to the entrance, away from the credit union, with plenty of room to circulate around them. They would be set back from the grass at least 30 feet, because we require a 30-foot path, because of course trucks would need to unload and get around it. So, I don't have a measurement to give you exactly, but I would say it's probably a good 60 feet from the curb. And they would probably be back just a little farther than the setback of the credit union. So, if you can visualize that, they'd be back, they'd be away from the street quite a ways.
I think the biggest thing in conversation, as we talk about this, is it's not necessarily U-Haul and their ability to facilitate something that doesn't appeal from the road, it's the ability to change the language in our planning and zoning to allow this at different properties as well. Right, so it's not a vote on U-Haul, it's a vote on the ordinance itself.
Can I ask, what type of ordinance does, like the Garden Center at Drug Town, what type of an ordinance allows them to put up their facility for the summer months?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development, we do have some different language that addresses temporary structures, in typically those garden structures and things that we allow for, which is different than a permanent use in structure. So, it's under some temporary regulation.
Is there a definition to what temporary means?
I want to say when we're less than 180 days, generally, is when it's considered temporary under building. We have some different stuff that applies when it's less than seven days, or if it's been seen seven, and so there's some various levels depending on uses. So, examples like when you might see a snow cone place, you know, that's, you know, we have some different things depending on some situations, but typically 180 days, six months.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the council?
So, would these properties be essentially built into the parking lot, or are they going to be freestanding structures that could be moved?
That is correct. They're prefabbed, they're constructed and then placed on the ground, so they're modular, or portable, if you want to call it that. Of course, they're anchored, so they don't blow away, but...
So, Michelle, maybe a question for Planning and Zoning, again, sorry to bring it back up, but so, is there a way to, when you talk to the language with regards to an ordinance, and you talked about changing the definition of temporary versus changing the definition of an ordinance for a site, is...
I would, so I'll just clarify as to how we would treat this building from a building perspective, is that being a permanent structure, it's going to have to meet building code requirements. And so, we are currently under the 2006 International Building Code, so there will be footing requirements, there may be other building code requirements that come into place, because we would consider it a permanent structure. So, even though something may be manufactured and brought in, it still has to meet our current building permit standards, that's not under the zoning ordinance, that's a building code requirement, which is already in place, and we don't have, we don't address those issues under the zoning chapters. So, I don't know if that helps any, but there's differences between, and even our temporary stuff, we have to comply with certain building things, but the building code addresses temporary structures as well. But being that these would be permanent, I would assume that there'd be no intention of moving them, they're not going to be mobile, is that they would have to comply with current building code, fire code, standards, all those kind of things.
Thank you.
Is there, is there another way, I know part of the, part of the heartbreak on this thing is that it can be done everywhere, other places. Is there a way that we could use this as a special use permit, or some other permitted, some other way that we could let it, make it so it's only at this site and not everywhere?
So, the Regional Commercial District, we have two locations in the community that are regional commercial zone classification, that's the Kmart Center and the mall. So, a change, as proposed in this ordinance, addresses those two locations. If the decision was to look at this rather than a permitted activity as a special use activity, we can amend the ordinance down that route, we would need to start back at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, because it would be a substantial change to what we have done public notice on previously, leading up to this point. So, and we have consulted with that from kind of a procedural standpoint, that we would, basically be a new application that says we're requesting that that be considered as a special use permit. What I will say about special use permits, as I understand things, is if we add it as a special use permit, and we enact different conditions upon a special use permit, it can't restrict it to only U-Haul, only this location. So, somebody could come in with another location at the mall, or a different place on the Kmart Center, for example, and say, I want a special use permit as well, and as long as they are able to meet X, Y, and Z conditions, then they also would be allowed to do that. So, you know, those conditions would be put forward, but we could not restrict it to purely this situation within our ordinance.
There's no way we can, we can just restrict it to this area?
No.
There's no way we can do that?
I do not believe so, no.
But by doing a special use, you can set your own guidelines?
We can set conditions that are, you know, things like landscaping, buffering, screening, so that would be part of an ordinance that we would have to redraft and bring back through the Planning Commission, through the council, if you wanted to go down that route, and then an applicant would have to apply for a special use permit, which goes through the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, to actually secure us a special use permit.
The reason I asked the question was, in his case, but also, I remember a few years ago, and you probably do too, there were some people talking about buying some of the other parking lot at the other mall, to build separate individual buildings, and we, we had a lot of heartbreak to get that done, and then it never happened. So, that's why I don't want this to go to both malls, but...
This change applies to both, both areas, correct?
Shoot.
Yes, sir.
Just a statement, Your Honor. I certainly welcome new business to Marshall Town, and especially U-Haul, the business is sound, it's nationwide, presents a good front, and so on. The sticking point, of course, we agree, Mr. Dixon, is the change in zoning, and what it really does is open, open up, and I'm restating it, a kind of a Pandora's Box for other types of structures in our malls. And I've got a real concern about that, and I have a real concern about going against our planning and zoning, who's given it much thought, and I'm concerned about that. So, with that, I do welcome your business, any other business as well, it's just that we have a sticking point that we don't seem to be able to get over.
Any other comments or questions by the council? Or by the public?
I have one more, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
As far as, it's hard to word this, but as far as the possibility of someone else going to the mall, doing the same thing that we are proposing to do, the chances of that are very slim. In this size of a community, it would be rough for anyone to go up against us with the same product. I don't mean to sound like I'm bragging, it's just a fact. Once we present this product, if we get to, I think that that would be it. And the other mall already has outlots that take up a lot of the frontage already, so there really isn't a lot of room left, if someone were to even think about this. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So, I understand his point and what he's trying to fight for, and, you know, we all want a new business and all that stuff. He has, U-Haul has built these projects without outlots, buildings. What he's saying about the outlaw buildings kind of bothers me, because there is a corner in the South Ridge Mall parking lot, right next to Arby's, nobody parks in it, it's basically dead space, and if anyone wanted to put storage units out there, outbuildings, this zoning ordinance does not require them to put inside storage buildings in the mall, so that is a potential use of an outlaw, which could be done. But basically, I think he's wrong in saying that no one could use the space. So, we could have outlaw buildings there if we pass it.
Can I ask another question of Michelle? Does the ordinance have the exterior buildings tied to an interior building? I'm just thinking what Mr. Eaton said, that does the person have to have either an ownership or a tenant, be a tenant of the, an... or a tenant, be a tenant of the, an interior of the property before they can have outbuildings?
Um, I guess my feeling would be that, no, it does not tie to that. That might be something we would want to look at a little bit further, um, from a, from a legal perspective, as to whether or not you could argue that it did, but I, I would tend to agree with Mr. Eaton's comments, that I, I think it would allow for exterior units as well, individually.
One, one point of clarification to make is that the ordinance that is before you tonight is for personal storage rental spaces, which are accessed from the interior of a building. It is, does not include any language related to allowing exterior buildings. So this is purely to add the use of inter, interior storage within the Regional Commercial District. That's what's before you tonight for, for third consideration.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, that is true. The discussions we have had of, of previous amendments would have been different.
Other public comments, or counselor comments? If not, let's call a roll.
Can we just, one more time, clarify what, or read the motion again, so that we have clarity of what we are voting on? I need clarity of what I'm voting on.
This is a motion to approve the third reading of ordinance 14980, as presented at the last meeting.
And to, to build on that, ordinance 14980 addresses, in its current form addresses, personal storage rental spaces, which are accessed from the interior of a building as a permitted use in the Regional Commercial District.
So our vote tonight has nothing to do with the outside unit?
You are correct.
Any other clarification needed? Now let's call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, now we're at the discussion, item J. The first one is about the request for, to restrict parking on East Main Street, easterly of 8th Avenue, made by the Marshawn Company.
Good evening, Justin Nickel. I've received a request from the Marshawn Company about the parking in the Main Street block between 8th and 9th Avenue. They will be constructing a loading dock, and thank you, Jessica, for bringing up the picture, maybe? Anyway, asking us to change the parking restriction in that block, as they will have large trucks, utilizing their new loading dock on the former site of, is that a laundromat or a pub? I can't remember.
Tom's cute.
Thank you, crowd.
Actually, actually, it's the old, uh, site where they haul, they did the, damn.
That site.
The moving site, the moving guy owned that big building, the moving company, remember? That's where they had all their semis in there.
And so Marshawn Company is, is worried, is worried about the ability to access the site for larger trucks. Realistically, that drive is at least going to wipe out the need for parking on the south side of Main Street, and as the picture depicts, they are concerned about parking on the north side. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Can you tell me what is directly north of there? Is it housing, or is it?
It's correct. In that block, there are at least three residences that I can think of off the top of my head. I believe furthest to the east would be one smaller residence, and then a tire repair shop, if my memory serves correct.
An auto repair shop with the fourth residence being acquired and owned by the tire repair shop currently. So there's, there's three residences that are basically from the corner of South 8th Avenue over.
So if there's consensus and approval, we would bring back a amendment to the parking ordinance? Yes, Counselor?
Those three residents have driveway accesses.
Two, two of them have driveways coming off of East Main Street, and one of them has a garage in the back of the property, but does not have a driveway access off of East Main Street.
Will, will the amendment to the ordinance require three readings?
Yes.
Okay.
And what is the status of parking? I know from 7th Street to the east, what is this, is it double side parking on the streets?
I would have to verify, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Every, every other, every other.
Alternating parking?
Is it alternating?
Yes.
That would be my guess, but I don't want to confirm.
It's been quite an expansion there. I think they added, what, 5,000 square feet? Maybe more than that.
I think it's like 20,000.
20,000, yeah.
Just seems like maybe they would have checked this before they built the building, but...
Is there any pushback to the idea?
I move that we go ahead and start the process to amend the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment? Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good. That's your direction, thank you for bringing that to us. Second item of discussion is the police and fire building cost update.
Good evening, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Going to give you an update on our costs. The payments are through the bill list that you approved tonight, and you can see that the bond proceeds are up here, 17.9 million. We have earned almost $297,000 in interest. I did add the artwork, that's the special line down here, $55,000, which you approved last meeting. So overall, before the change orders that you approved tonight, we were at $1.1 million, and with the change orders that you did approve, we would be sitting at $939,000. That's uncommitted at this point. This does not include any legal settlements. Any questions?
That means 939,000 to the positive compared to what we budgeted?
Yes.
Why would we like getting good news like that, Diana?
And when you said it did not contain any legal settlements, those, I assume, would be in our favor?
Don't know.
No, not what I'm thinking of. Okay, never mind.
I was betting that way myself, actually.
This just has the original contracts for the many different disciplines that we know of today.
Any questions? More further comment?
Again, Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So doing a little research, the city purchased the KC Hall for this project, and the city taxpayer footed the bill for removing the asbestos from that building before the project began, so that cost is not in this bond, but it is associated with the project. I'd just like the council to consider, if there's money left over, that you somehow figure out how to manipulate the accounts and move the money out of this bond and repay the taxpayer for the removal of that asbestos, or any acquisition of that property that we had to pay for.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive, and I guess it's a question for Diana. Last council meeting, we talked about, and Chief Tepper talked about the purchase for Officer Safety, I think it was called Milo, is that correct? And in that, it's part of the minutes here, portion of the 76, 860 will be paid by remaining balance furniture and fixture balance, about 40,000 remaining paid from the bond. So I don't see that on here, and I guess I'm curious as to where that is. And for the record, I support the purchase of Milo. I think in doing that, it's critically important to have that information for our public safety folks, especially our policemen, in order to have that. So I just want to know where it comes on this, because I don't see it anyplace.
Thank you. I, I want to say, just to clarify that, there is a line item, that's the second, the first to the last one, called Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, and I believe that amount is included in that $100,164 encumbered, but yet, not yet spent.
Okay, so that's where it is.
Thank you. Any other public comment? That means we actually then get to go to item K, which is public comment, and I have to read the same amendment again. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the mic, state his or her name and address. Limit comments to three minutes, unless longer comments authorized by me. Direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and counselors are not to engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those items, because it would violate the open meetings laws. With that said, does anyone from the public wish to approach the mic?
Lee Bottor, again, 401 Orchard Drive. I know that this has been a source of frustration between folks on making sure that people are volunteering. I did submit my application for the appointment to boards and commissions, and if that can be addressed somehow in the public, even in the TR, the website, on how those individuals are chosen for that, I have not heard word back on that, and I'm just curious as to how people are chosen to serve on that for the boards and commissions. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for applying. Other comment?
Karen Nable, 109 North 21st Street. I was wondering if we have final numbers on the Valor Program.
The, the last I heard was in about what this...
I, I was going to say, this is something that Michelle can get directly to you, we can't discuss this, because it is not an item on the agenda, but the Housing and Community Development Department can provide that information at a future meeting.
It was fun to see the office that was set up by the Habitat for Humanity crew. They've got a lot of young people in the basement in the city center, they're working hard, I saw their, their van driving around town today. God bless them for mobilizing people to come in here and, and help those that need repair is still done. Enough editorializing, is there any other public comment? Let's show that we are adjourned at 6:34 PM.